We'll call the meeting, the order. Everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you everyone for attending. First order of business, Commissioner Evans, do we have any beginning notes from you?
A couple of short ones. Welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us. Our meetings are neutral ground, a place to hear and be heard. The Commissioner is here to represent everyone in county. We strive to be sure decisions address the needs of all. We're all in this together. Just a reminder, any questions or statements regarding an agenda item will be entertained under citizens to be heard at the top of the meeting. All other matters will be recognized during public comment at the end of the meeting. Lurdo will be on the Cothley School District Finance Committee and Board Agendas for next Tuesday's June 14th meeting. Fingers crossed, we're almost there. We've made some progress on our exploration of Zoom storage and we'll be discussing it under additional business later in the meeting. It's in the bag, yes. We're exploring different options for a possible plastic bag. Determined if it would be feasible for our township without creating undue burden for our small businesses. These troubled times, last weekend, a mass shooting on South Street in Philadelphia left three dead and 11 wounded. Closer to home, a domestic violence situation in a neighboring township ended with a double murder and a carjacking. After a police chase, that suspect was apprehended by county township police. And all this happened right on heels of a body and the stabbing at cash. When will this anger and rage end? It doesn't have to be this way, folks. All of us to work to turn the tide of hatred and violence and bring this world back to a place of peace, love, and understanding. Cleanup time, I'm happy to say that there's nothing to clean up this week. Nice job, social media. And lastly, county township is open for business. Nothing is ever perfect, but it's our township, our community, our home. We can all be a part of the solution by yearly spreading the good news about where we live.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. All right, next on the agenda, citizens to be heard. I guess am I looking out to Abby to see if we have any hands raised?
Actually, I'm monitoring from here, Paul, and there isn't any hands raised.
Okay, any hands raised here at the township building? None at this time. All right, next on the agenda, we have a presentation from Mike Fuller for the PICO buyback program. Mike, how are you? Good.
Kristin, I'm not sure if you wanted to say anything leading into this, or if I should just jump into it.
I would just jump into it, Mike.
Okay, great. So I'm here talking about your LED street lighting upgrade project. So just to refresh your memory a little bit, back at the end of last year, we provided a feasibility study to you that basically gave you project costs and the savings associated with it, and also the paybacks that would result from that. So basically, at that time, we were looking at projects that had, we gave you multiple options. They were going to be in the $85,000 to $112,000 range with savings of $34,000 to $37,000. So you're getting paybacks in the two and a half to three-year time period to do these upgrades to LED lighting. So you passed a resolution at the end of last year to move into the design phase. And we kicked that off in the first quarter of this year. We really didn't get our auditors on the ground and moving until February, March timeframe. So we're about ready to come back to you with the final project specification and proposal. So this will be, we've now actually gone out and looked at all your streetlights and have an accurate idea of what you actually have and are going to recalculate the project numbers for you. But there's, when we look at the savings for your project, it comes from two sources, okay, actually three. So there's maintenance savings, but the majority of the savings are energy cost savings through your PICO bill. You currently do not own your streetlights. PICO owns them. And they actually charge you for energy costs, and they also charge you for maintenance. And it's quite expensive what you're being charged for the maintenance portion of it. So what PICO has been doing for years, and actually most municipalities have already gone through this process, they allow municipalities to buy back the fixtures and then you can upgrade them. So we can't upgrade the fixtures till you actually buy them back. But it's very financially beneficial to do that buyback because to get off the tariff where they're maintaining it and where now you get on a much lower cost tariff. And you do have to provide maintenance services, which most municipalities do. They hire third-party contractors to do it. It's much, much cheaper than what PICO charges you for that. So the reason I'm here tonight, I'm going to be coming back in July, probably in July, possibly August, but I believe July to present the final project proposal. But we'd like you to consider through this meeting and the next meeting, authorizing the PICO buyback portion of it. That's the first step in this process. And even if you, and you may, just to clarify, you should not be uncomfortable approving that portion of it because it's justifiable, even if you decide in July or August not to do the project, okay? Most municipalities have already done this. And I want to just share with you some of the financial benefits of doing just the PICO buyback portion of the project. So the energy cost savings were about, I said around $35,000 per year. Well, $29,000 of those savings come from just the PICO buyback process, not even upgrading to LED technology. So most of your savings in the project come from the PICO buyback. And if I take that $29,000 and subtract out what you'd probably pay for third-party maintenance for, and you have 229 streetlight fixtures that we're talking about, that would be about $4,000 per year. So you still have a $25,000 per year net savings, not even upgrading the fixtures, just buying them back from PICO and maintaining them yourself. So that's over $2,000 per month of savings just by buying them back from PICO. Your cost to do that buyback is only $3,000. Because PICO has, they have to depreciate these streetlights over time. And generally, most streetlights are very old. So they've depreciated from a much higher purchase value or original value down to $3,000. So we talked to Kristin about this, and there's two steps to this that we're looking at. The first is to have a motion or a decision to move forward with the PICO buyback or to approve the dollar amount associated with it. So to approve the $3,000 expenditure to save yourself $25,000 per year. And then we're going to come back with the actual PICO agreement, which your solicitor has not had a chance to look at yet. And in the next meeting, she will have looked at that and, you know, told you basically, this is a, the agreement really can't be changed. PICO never changes the agreement. But if there's any questions for clarification, you know, make sure that your solicitor was comfortable with all that. So that would be step two at your next meeting. And so basically, if you look at the numbers where it only costs $3,000 to do this buyback and you're going to save $25,000 per year just for this transaction, I'll call it, that's like a one and a half month payback to do that. And then after the payback, you're saving $25,000 per year, almost $2,000 per month, even if you never do the LED upgrade. Now, we're going to come back and tell you why it makes sense to do the LED upgrade in a month or so here. But we at least wanted to get this jump started. And the reason we're doing this is it seems like the PICO buyback process is getting longer and longer. And what, you know, what used to be a couple-month process or even less than a couple months, they're now saying the PUC is moving very slowly. And so we're looking, they're giving us estimates of like three to five months to complete this. And what we want to do is we want to make sure that we get your project done as soon as possible. Hopefully this year still, if you approve it in July. But to do that, we feel like we need to get this PICO buyback process started as soon as possible. So that's why we're bringing this to you as a separate kind of first step to the project. And again, even if you decide not to do the project, this is a very financially justifiable decision, so. So I don't, Kristin, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, but.
No, just, you know, just that this is, you know, something we've been working on. This has been one of Commissioner Young's big things he's been trying to get done for years. It is a lengthy process with a lot of turns. But ultimately, it is a good deal in looking out for efficiency, sustainability, and the best for the taxpayer dollar.
Right.
Commissioners, any questions on this?
I just wanted to clarify some. Thank you, Mr. Fuller. I'm excited about this. Clarify, in the document I have that says the total is $2,407.06, and you've said $3,000. I just wanted to see which number is right.
Yeah, the, it's just shy of $3,000, so it's.
So the 2407 is correct?
Yeah, you know what, I'd want to, can I take a second just confirm that for you, but I think that's correct.
I mean, it's, this is, it's, it's, it's a great idea, so I'm not trying to, I just wanted to make sure that I had the right document.
Yeah, so I do apologize. I actually had to stay over night, last night, unanticipated, so I don't have all my files with me. So Kristin, do you have the buyout number? That's the exact buyout number that PICO.
If you give me two seconds.
Yeah.
On May 31st, 2022.
Yeah, I was giving you some rounded figures for the savings and the.
That's what I thought you were doing.
Apologize, I'm just trying to find that.
Yeah, I'm going to look on my email here real quick, too.
Any other commissioners want to just show it, show the document?
That's why I was just pulling that up.
On the.
Yeah, do you, did the commissioners have a copy of, was there a handout that you're referring to?
I can actually put it on the screen if you give me two seconds.
Yeah, the number is $2,407.06.
Awesome, thank you. I'm sorry to slow down the meeting with something so trivial. I just wanted to make sure that I was.
Okay.
Reading the right thing.
Mike, can you see it up on the screen? I'm sorry to.
Yep. All right, thanks, Kristin.
Yes, thank you.
Mark, any other questions?
Oh my God, no. Why don't we go on?
I did have one question. The $24,000, $25,000 of savings, is that the maintenance part from PICO? Where's the savings coming from?
Yeah, when you look at their bill, they kind of conflate the energy cost and the maintenance savings. They don't have a separate line item that says, here's your maintenance costs and here's your electricity costs. They just say, if you have this type of fixture, we're going to charge you a couple hundred dollars per year for that fixture type. So it's all integrated into a per fixture charge. But essentially, yes, it is coming from mostly the maintenance costs because they really, again, they don't break it out, but they wouldn't be able to say that we're going to charge you more for energy than another township for energy that isn't on that same tariff and they already own their fixtures. So by process of elimination, yeah, the difference would be all maintenance-related costs.
Okay, so my next question is, if it's gonna, if our public works needs to take care of them, what maintenance costs are we looking at?
So we estimated that the, the PICO costs, the savings you would have are $29,000 approximately. And we estimate that you really, and I think this is a high estimate, would have about $4,000 per year with a third-party maintenance contractor to maintain those.
Okay, all right, so that's factored in.
I've got it factored in. So when I show the $25,000 net savings, that's after I've accounted for some third-party maintenance contractor savings. So you're, in your public works, really, they could just call a third-party maintenance contractor when there's an outage and that contractor would come take care of it. Depends how big your public works is. Some municipalities have their own public works to take care of things, others call contractors, most call contractors. And there are plenty that do this work.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was factored in.
Yep.
I mean, it's one thing to reduce a maintenance fee, but you know someone else is going to be taking care of it.
Yep.
So, okay, that's Jane.
I was just going to ask, in the next presentation, would it define what the cost would be to have LED lights? What they cost, brackets or any other apparatus that's needed? And you're taking away the poles, so what's going to replace them?
Yeah, so I'll answer the last question first. PICO still owns the poles. All you're buying are the arms and the light fixture.
Okay.
Because PICO's running their wires on the poles, so they still own those.
Okay.
So you're just buying back what they call brackets, which are arms and the actual fixtures. So when we come back to, we're going to present the whole project in July again or August. And at that point, we'll show you the whole integrated view of the savings with the buyback and then also with the LED, the benefits of upgrading the technology and becoming 50% more efficient than what they currently are.
All right, thank you.
You, just a quick question. You did say in the first presentation what the estimated savings are with, even with the LEDs. And the, basically, the return on investment was just a couple of years, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
When we looked at this starting 10 years ago, you know, there were six, seven-year paybacks just because the technology was so expensive back then. But we, you know, I found this program through DVR PC. And, you know, it seemed like it was a right fit for us and finally something we can maybe move forward with and then reclassify our streetlight tax, which would save people some money.
Absolutely, yep.
Thanks, Josh. And with the brackets being so old, would we get into the position where we need to replace?
So when we go through the installation process, the, we carry contingency for your project to handle things like rewires that we can't tell from the audit. So when the contractor gets up there, puts on the new LED fixture, if he sees that wiring is bad, we're carrying contingency to allow him for a certain percentage of fixtures to rewire those. We almost never see arms that are in such bad shape that they've got to be replaced.
Commissioners, any other questions before I ask public? Mr. Denny, I know I saw some hands raised there. I didn't pick up a name, but.
Yep, Mr. Parr.
There we go. Now can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Tom Parr, 582 Lloyd Avenue. Back here in the Beaver Run Light District, we don't have brackets on poles. We have these old piece-of-junk colonial black poles with the lights on top. So are they, would they be totally replaced?
So the, what we do for those, we call those four-sided colonials, and you have 67 of those in your project.
Right.
We replace the entire head, so the decorative four-sided head, the lantern-style head, and put in a brand-new LED fixture. We do not replace poles unless the township tells us that they see a need for poles to be replaced.
Okay, all right. Well, that answered my question because, like I said, you were talking braces on telephone poles. And I know none of the lights that are behind my house, none of them are on telephone poles. Josh, did you, have you had a chance at all to look into what you and I talked about way back when, about the front footage?
Oh, basically, yes. We, Kristin and I did start pulling those ordinances. And it is so hard to tell from them. They basically used the cost price and then divided that by, you know, a linear foot.
Right.
So that's how that was done. What we, what we think we're going to do now is get this project done, wait six months to a year, see what the actual costs are per light in the district. And then we can reevaluate because when we increase it, we just increase it based off that old rate. We don't really know, like he was saying, what the maintenance costs versus the actual electricity. You know, we just get the PICO bill and then we divide that by linear foot. So I think we can, if we get this done by the end of the year, then we can take next year and either six months or a year of data, figure out what the actual cost is and then go. Because there are neighborhoods that are older than yours that use the same amount of electricity that have a low rate because they used the base of what it cost when it was installed. So your neighborhood's newer, so it was more expensive then. So. So that's how it's based now. We think we can, we can work with that. We just need probably six months of data to actually give you that cost. And so I would be looking probably at 2023 budget to figure out exactly how we're going to rebuild those, those lighting fixtures with, hopefully with the LED, which would be, you get more light at a lower cost. So, you know, that's what we're looking for.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you, Josh. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Another hand raised?
Yes. Mr. D Young?
Hello, everybody. Mark D Young, 20 Beaver Run Road, following up on the statement that Josh made. Just wanted to check. I know it's going to take a little while to figure all this out, but the intention is to pass the savings along to the residents that are paying the streetlight bills now.
Yes, that, and actually, that fund, if I'm not wrong, Kristin, that fund is in the negative for this, this budget year.
Yeah, that fund has, you know, always been a little bit of a problem that it always kind of runs in the negative for roughly, you know, $10,000. You know, and a lot of it is that we, we, you know, just that the way that, like you were discussing, this convoluted billing, we need to kind of get a new system in place and hopefully with the new, the new, you know, system, new LEDs, more sustainability, better pricing, because we'll be coming off of a PICO's rate that this will assist in that process.
And I think, just to be clear, the streetlight fund can only be used for streetlights. So if we have a major savings in that, we can't use it for other things unless we wanted to build more streetlights. But the intention is to shrink the cost for the people that are already on the streetlight bills. You know, and then if there's something left or people come to us and ask for additional streetlights, you know, we can use any savings there, too.
Great, great news. Thank you. Appreciate it. It's a good project.
All right, any other hand raised?
Not at this time.
Okay, are we taking a, doing a motion tonight for this or just waiting for two weeks?
We just have a motion to move forward with the pricing presented by PICO for the back, for the buyback program.
For the $2,400, $2,407?
$2,407.06, I believe it is.
And six cents. All right, entertain a motion.
For 10 years of waiting, I'll make that motion.
So moved. Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion's good, 5-0.
Congratulations, Commissioner Young. Thank you.
Last thing is I'll just say at your next meeting, I don't know if I'll be here for that because it's just going to be having your solicitor say that they've reviewed the agreement.
Right.
So that'll be the second step. But then I'll be back in July or August to present the whole project and really go through in detail the final project specification.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, we have our Township Engineer.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. I have a few items on the list today. I have several payment applications. The first payment application I have is for the Fitzgerald Road Stream Bank Restoration Project. That is for an invoice submitted on May 6th, work up to that time. And that pay application is in the amount of $320,373.04.
Commissioners, any questions on this one?
No.
If not, I will entertain a motion to approve it. The moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Young. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed. All right, motion's good, 5-0. Next.
The next pay application is, again, this is actually pay application number three for the Fisherville Road Stream Bank Restoration. And this invoice was actually submitted on May 13th, seven days later. And this is basically the, they're 100% complete at this point. So they submitted their invoice and also a change order. And with the change.
I saw that, negative 3,000. I like to see negatives.
$3,003, I think it was.
Yeah.
Credit, so that came off of the contract amount. They, we are retaining 10% for punchless items and things like that. So the, this pay application number three is in the amount of $53,097.30. With, and with the 10% retainage that we're holding is $49,709.70.
Commissioners, any questions? Not? Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
The move by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's good, 5-0. Third one on the list.
Third one on the list is the pay application number two for the municipal drive stream bank restoration. This project was completed under payment application number one. This is now just paying out the retainage, the 10% retainage.
Okay.
And that is in the amount of $6,121.50.
Commissioners, any questions on that? Entertain a motion to approve.
The move.
Moved. Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 So I'll, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's Kristin. I think we're going to hold on the PSA. I think Casey was still doing some work on that. So we were going to hold, we're going to hold that PSA over for the next meeting.
Okay. Yep.
Oh, the last item?
We talked about that before.
The last item we're going to hold?
Yeah, the number four, we're going to just postpone that and address it next month, at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, no motion or anything needs, maybe Paul will just move it to the next agenda.
Not going to argue with that. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Township Manager, Mr. Denny, what do we have?
So we have, for the first thing, it is the request for consideration of payment application number two to Charles Higgins and Sons, Inc. for the installation of a traffic signal light on Lloyd Avenue in the amount of $101,707.06.
We don't approve? They turn it off?
Um, you're going to, well, here's the thing. If we don't approve it and pay it, we don't get reimbursed from PennDOT. So I think we should probably consider putting this payment through so we can get the reimbursement from PennDOT.
Mark, how's it going out there?
Oh my God, it's great.
Big difference? You froze.
Huge difference. Like never traffic jam anymore. It's quiet. It's really, I think the residents are happy and I think the communities that are not sitting in traffic and cursing at each other are really happy too.
That is good to hear. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the $101,707 to Charles Higgins and Sons for the installation of the traffic signal on.
So moved.
The moved.
So moved.
And Lorraine, was that a second there?
I thought it was a so moved.
Oh, she's so moved, and then Mark.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner. So Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero.
Uh, the next thing that we have is the request for consideration of approval for the certificate of substantial completion that was presented on May twentieth, two thousand twenty-two for the Lloyd Avenue Traffic Light. Assuming all punchless, excuse me, assuming all punchless items are completed within ninety days. Um, the engineer that worked on this project, Alfred Federico, has inspected this project. Um, he feels that the punchless items can be completed within ninety days and that a certificate of substantial completion can be signed.
Motion to.
So moved.
Yeah, okay, there you go. So moved.
Second.
I moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion's good, five zero. All right, and I did see a hand raised, so I might as well open for public comment at this time. Or I, I know some of the folks might have been uh, happy to see this traffic light.
Hey, it's Mark D Young. I'm just calling to say I'm happy.
Good to hear, Mark.
It really makes a whole lot of sense. It's made a whole lot of sense for a long time to have three or four cars go at a time. So I have not had one trouble at that bridge since the lights went in. So thank you very much for getting that done.
All right, thank you, Mark. Any other hands raised there, uh, Miss Denny?
Not at this time.
All right, uh, we have ordinance. Uh, I think we're just gonna table the first one. I think uh, until well, next time. Segment, advertisement of the ordinance of twenty twenty-three dash three, amending the code of county township. Part two, general legislation, the vehicle and traffic speed limits established. Uh, commissioners, did you get a chance to look at that list?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause Miss Denny, I, I know last meeting, we, we were discussing Johnson uh, Avenue and Quarry Street. And then I was kinda curious why the others were added to this or was it, are they being added to this?
The, the only things being changed is what was in red. That is the actual or- ordinance itself.
Oh.
So when, when you pull up the ordinance, because we're only amending a certain part, that's why there's strike throughs and, and what's in, i- if the red came out in your additions. But those are all of the streets that have that section.
And none of ours have, well, at least the, the version I have that was emailed to us is not, um, does not have red lines.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's just fixing quarry and I apologize, I, the formatting must have not came when we emailed it. Just quarry and Johnson are the ones that have been changed on that list.
Oh, okay, just the speed limits were actually changed.
Yes. If, if you opened your code online, you can see, like, you know, and put in that ordinance, you can see all of those roads already exist.
Okay.
What's that, Josh?
I just said, okay.
Oh, okay.
At first, when you said red, I can't see red anyway, but I don't think this is red.
Okay.
All right, commissioners, any questions on this? And this was advertised?
No, this is the motion to advertise.
To, okay.
Okay.
Advertise.
So if, if the board wanted to move on this at the, we would advertise between now and the next meeting. Um, and then it would be for approval at the next meeting.
Okay, and these were the recommendations from our police department?
Correct.
Commissioners, uh, any questions on this?
No.
Uh, residents? Any hands raised? Okay, entertain a motion to advertise the ordinance twenty twenty-two dash three with the uh, updated or modified speed limits. So moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero. All right, moving on to the minutes. We have uh, the Board of Commissioners minutes of May twenty-six to approve any additions, corrections needed. If not, entertain a motion.
So second.
All right, moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Minutes have been approved. Uh, next, uh, the acknowledgement, uh, the receipt of the planning commission minutes from April nineteenth meeting. Uh, commissioners, any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Too much.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero. Moving on to uh, check run. We have a general check run from forty-eight thousand, three hundred and six to forty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-six and a manual check run, two sixty-four and two sixty-five. Commissioners, any questions on this? If not, entertain a motion to approve the check run.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Check run has been approved. Board and commission updates, uh, parking wreck.
Parking wrecks. Well, we're on fire. It's like every time we're together, it's like uh, new ideas, you know, yeah, evolving all the time and I know Abby, you know, she steers that ship and with the new members on board, they have so much energy. I mean, it's exciting to see, you know, like new people on board and coming with the type of energy they have and enthusiasm to make things happen. And I like being a part of that. So, you know, we, we have our two new pool stations and I, I did get a chance to peek at them. So if you haven't seen them, go by Lloyd Park and the one pool station has the little doggy theme on it, which is appropriate for the dog park. And the books are loaded and ready to go. And at the municipal park, the design has the uh, old Hexagon Schoolhouse and the little geese running across. So so appropriate also. I think, I don't remember the lady's name. She's an artist on our board now and Liz. And she designed that and fixed it up so beautiful, you know, so, you know, kudos to her because that was nice. And the other gentleman that volunteered to, Tom?
Tom Bar.
Well, you gotta go by and see him. And we wanna just use these two as models. Um, and it's an idea. I see the little guy came by and was picking out books. And so if you go by, you can leave a book and take a book or share a book or if you're in the park with your little ones, uh, take out a couple of books and just sit up under the shade of a tree and enjoy. Okay, so hopefully we'll be able to do more in the near distant future if they're successful. Well, thank you for the volunteers that have agreed to make sure that the books are kept nice and nobody's putting trash or anything else in the uh, the pool station. So make sure you go by. Very nice. Job well done. Also, we're gonna be having our first summer movie series on uh, Friday, June seventeenth. Come out and sing. And we're gonna show Sing Two in the park. It's gonna start around eight-thirty with popcorn and lots of kids, you know, out of school now. And it's a, a great time to kick the summer off with, in the park. So make sure you share the word and families come out and let's enjoy the summer months, because they're gonna go by so fast. And we're getting ready for our community day event, what is gonna be held on September tenth. So it's being organized. You can go to our website. If you're interested in being a vendor, if you know someone that'd like to be a vendor, it's gonna be at the municipal park this year from three to eight. And we're working out parking logistics and they're coming along pretty nice. And we'll give more updates on that as they're finalized. Um, we also had a discussion to do uh, a joint event with the historical commission as it was requested by our very own Mark Evans. And we're working that out. And we came up with some great ideas of how we could co-partner and, you know, make this a, a successful historical Christmas in Calantown Township. So we're, we're, we're working on it. Didn't want you to think, Mark, that we had forgotten about it, but there's like tons of ideas from trolley rides to hot chocolate. So, you know, let us keep, you know, ticking away at it and see what we come up and how we can make this happen. So we can show off the beautiful Spackman Farm. That concludes my report.
Eugene, got me all excited now.
Maybe a hayride.
Next, uh, COG.
Okay, here I am. Here I'm up again. Uh, there wasn't much activity going on at our last COG meeting. Um, again, they're working out a lot of logistics, as many of the municipalities are that, you know, participate with COG. And as many of us are concerned, and as we just heard now that uh, Tower Health is going to, as of September twenty twenty-two, no longer provide ambulance service from the Brandywine Hospital Hub. So that kinda had everybody up in arms. I mean, we're already trying to figure out a way to get around the situation with the closures and all these different changes of, you know, obtaining memberships with different uh, ambulance services, which is a hot agenda. So we spend the most of the time just listening um, to how this is impacting our entire county. Yeah, that, that really took people by surprise that Tower Health is now, you know, not gonna provide that ambulance service. So that went on and on. Uh, in the near future, Kristen and I are gonna meet with some of the other uh, panelists and some of the other administrators of COG to talk about the animal control project that has been going on for the last couple of years. So we'll look at it, see if it's uh, worth the investment, you know, for our township to become a part of that. Is it gonna really save? And how, what does it really look like? I mean, this is just something that they're experimenting with and they really don't know. But they just feel as though some of the financing and a lot of the budgets that they're double dipping at SPCA, I don't, I don't know what that looks like. And until we really get all the logistics, nobody really knows. But it could be a savings. But again, they have to find a place to house these animals, somebody to hire to take care of them. So it's a lot of work involved in it, but they might be on to something. So we'll give them the opportunity to make the presentation and we'll report back. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Next, uh, the municipal authority. Uh, over at the Chester County Sports Arena Project, uh, due to the delay in installing the new sanitary sewer gravity system across the wetlands there, uh, the CTMA approved at their May meeting, a sanitary sewer on lot septic temporary holding facility and an O and, O and M pumping agreement with them. Just to, you know, get them through this period of time. Uh, on May sixteenth, Gilmore and Associates, that's our engineer, uh, company, forwarded a copy of the plan of study and a draft of county township's Act five thirty-seven plan over to Dara for review. And on May tenth, uh, the CTMA submitted an ARPA grant with the county uh, for the county meeting house Granger Lane project. Uh, uh, the proposed budget for the project and the amount requested was about eighty-five percent of the project, uh, roughly. Uh, I think we're asking for about five hundred and twenty-six, a little less than five hundred and twenty-six thousand for this project. Uh, with a local match, about fifteen percent. Um, and this extension project, it'll help uh, provide public sewer to about thirty-three existing homes uh, that desperately need the public sewer up in that area. And that is a quick update for uh, the CTMA, for Dara. Uh, pretty much just the fact that uh, we have submitted our Act five thirty-seven with Dara. I don't have a full update on Dara, but uh, I think Dara is waiting for the other municipalities to submit theirs. Uh, still hoping to get uh, some additional um, allocations out of that uh, plant to help our township out. And uh, next, fire board. Uh, we did have our meeting, May nineteenth. Few items were discussed. Uh, one, discussed uh, having the BOC approve the purchase of the new command vehicle, which of course was done at the last uh, last meeting, the May twenty-sixth Board of Commissioners meeting. Uh, we also discussed on updating the agreement between the fire department and the township. Uh, still working on that. And uh, we are informed uh, at that time that the annual audit has not been completed. Uh, the auditing, auditing firm informed the fire board uh, that earlier in the year, they had lost all the information that Mr. Carbo had forwarded to them to complete this audit. And then recently, Mr. Carbo was informed that the auditing firm no longer performs this service. So the fire board is looking for another firm to perform its annual audit that is required by our uh, agreement. So that uh, that was our highlight. All right, uh, next on the agenda, historical commission.
Hey, that's me. Um, historic commission uh, met as scheduled on Wednesday, May eighteenth. In attendance were all members and one guest. We heard updates from all of our subcommittees. Spackman Farm Subcom reported on the coming driveway and parking area improvements and voted to reach out to Parks and Rec about partnering on a candidate hot cocoa holiday event at Spackman Farm. And uh, Ms. Kennedy, Commissioner Kennedy uh, uh, reported on that as well. Uh, marketing and social media reported that once they received the before or after drone images, the article will be sent out to town and county lively, Quetzalcoatl Times, daily local, the Patch and Vista. The commission also voted to place a paid advertisement in the fall issue of the CCHPM Chester County Ledger. Historical Preservation Subcom reported that the historical preservation ordinance would soon be reviewed by the Board of Commissioners. There is also a presentation on Lloyd Farm and a discussion of the dangers presented to the Buchanan House by the owner's recent business activities. Finance Update reported that CCHPM annual membership was paid, leaving a remaining balance of seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. We voted to reschedule our June meeting to Wednesday, June twenty-ninth to allow our members to attend at the CCHPM Volunteer Dinner on our regularly scheduled meeting date. Um, I don't sound very excited right now because I'm not feeling well, but I assure you, this is a fun group. This is an active group. This is a group that's getting things done. And you know what? We could get a whole lot more done with some more of you exciting people coming and joining us. Just come check us out on the twenty-ninth and see if you're interested in giving us some time because we could use you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Hi, Lorraine Tindaro. Uh, there's more information regarding uh, historic commission. Uh, we, Sunday, June fifth, we had open house at the Hexagon Schoolhouse. We had about nine people attend. We went over the history of the Pims family. Where the house was, where it is now. And um, we had a very nice time. Also, uh, with golf, the golf, uh, we have the one-year plan and the five-year plan. Let, just to let you know, they are progressing. And we will have a monthly meeting in June, the date to follow. Thank you very much, Lorraine.
And I can add a little bit to the golf uh, meeting. It was, it was beautiful. It was probably like, this is only my second time there and I, I spent most of the time with TA. He kinda like wearing multiple hats there. And I, I was just interested in uh, seeing uh, if there was any interest in promoting like a summer camp for youth. And if that was something that he would be interested in doing as an incentive to generate income, you know, to the, to the budget. Um, because there's all kinda camps that are like overflowing right now with children. And, you know, for beginners or different levels, you know, uh, be something. And he reassured me that he would look into it again. It was something that before COVID, that he did do on some type of scale. And we compared that. I took in the PGA um, outline of one that's operating in Honeybrook, where they have a youth camp. And he was pretty much familiar with it. Thought it was a great idea, was gonna look at it a little bit more and see if it's something we can get back up and running as well. There is a women's league or a women's group, which I was excited to hear about. Uh, but I think more women need to get involved and we just need to hear more about it because I, I, I'd never had an interest, but I think now I do. And maybe even to take on membership as well. Um, and we looked at some of the ideas of upgrading the landscaping and the scope and maybe projecting some images of what the exterior of the clubhouse should look like and just making it like really nice. I mean, you wanna just when you set your eyes on, you know, the golf course, you wanna have people come in, you, you want them to love this place. You know, if you're gonna spend time there and money there, then we're gonna have to find ways to raise money to bring up the image of, of the golf uh, clubhouse and, you know, have some other events going on around there to generate income. Cause the picnic grove was beautiful, you know, and it maybe it can be used for other purposes. And the last thing that we um, kinda talked about a little bit was uh, again, how to raise money for the fencing and different projects that he need. We, the golf courts carts are gonna be great when they come in. He said like now on Saturdays, they're running out of carts. I mean, so we're getting a lot of uh, people interested. And we also looked at uh, doing discounts. If we can put together like new resident packages for all this development that's coming into the township. And he thought about having like a welcome package for new uh, families to have like a family packet, you know, or some type of discount to get them interested in membership. And we wanted to promote, promote that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Right. Last but not least, we have Lincoln Highway.
As Mark said earlier, we are hopeful that we will get a positive outcome next week um with the uh school board at the committee meetings. Um, so we're, we're hopeful for that. We're still working with that. Um, and at our last meeting, we did announce that um we've got some spurring some new uh economic development and Mark and I continue to be willing to meet with anybody to, to um do what we can to secure some new business along Lincoln Highway.
And I just want to say Commissioner Young has been just outrageously brilliant with and committed through all of this. And, and thank you, sir.
It's, it's a marathon, not a sprint. So you have to, you know, hold hands and get, get yourself there.
That's right.
All right. Well, good luck, guys.
Thank you.
What's that, Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay. I'll be rooting for you.
Yay.
All right, done. We are on to additional business. Oh, um, I would like to ask if there's any public comment on the boards and commissions before I move on.
None at this time.
Okay. All right. Additional business. We have two items uh from the last meeting. Uh, the single-use plastic ordinance. Abby, you, you're amazing. The information you're sending over to me. So I did forward that to the rest of the board today. Uh, it was some information and, and I really didn't get a chance to read it yet, pertaining to how Philadelphia is dealing with it. Pittsburgh was the other city. And I know you got, there, there's some local areas. Norbert? Really? And, and now the Westchester one I read and, you know, this is all just open discussion here, but when I read that, it was more, I, I think they tailored it more towards the fact that they just have um restaurants and shops and everything right down Gay Street and Market Street. And I think they were trying to keep the litter and whatnot. I, I, I mean, when I first read it, that was my impression that they were just trying to clean up the streets because it is a public venue there. I don't know if it was tailored just for that. Norbert is kind of like the same thing. There's a little strip there in Norbert on the Monk Emery Avenue. They have restaurants. Sure, yeah. Yeah.
Why, why can't I hear? I can't hear something.
Oh. That was Abby.
Sorry, I just said um that I had offered to Paul to reach out to those two municipalities and try to get some intel for y'all.
Intel.
You're great.
Uh commissioners, any, any thoughts on this? Uh, you know, this, this is open to discussion and, and really, is it something that will work for our township? Uh, is it, is it worth the hassle to the businesses, residents and whatnot? I mean, overall, of course, we're here to save the environment. Um, to what degree? So, and I, I think some of the other questions that came up while we were reading this is uh, is it just the single, is it the plastic bag that we're trying to prevent? Uh, there's other plastics out there. I don't know how specific or general we want to be, but one, once again, I'm throwing this out there and it, it could be something we do, something that we don't.
It's going to be a long process of exploration, that's for sure.
Yeah. And I said that the last meeting, I would reach out to the big grocery store outlets. Unfortunately, due to injuries and COVID, I, I've been so short-staffed at work that I just have not had um the time to do that, but I will do that in the next week or so.
Fantastic.
Many of the uh stores have recycle bins in their stores when you come in. So if you wanted to recycle the bag that you were using, uh, you can. A lot of times, it, it should be interesting to see how much will this and costs? Will, will this cost us more money by trying to do this? Food has doubled. Um. These are like additional things that we would have to look into. Is everyone agreeable to this?
Lorraine, if you look at Aldi, Aldi doesn't have bags that you can use, see, reuse plastic bags. They have, you have to buy the reusable ones or you take your stuff out with, with nothing.
Aren't very healthy, even if you wash them, depends on what you put in the bags. You're shopping all the time with bags of bags. So forgive me, that's, I'm, I'm not really thrilled with it. And you're right, I have shopped at Aldi's. We usually use boxes. So if people were going to do that instead of add additional cost to your food, that's a big thing we should have to consider right now. Because everything has gone up almost twice the amount with food, canned goods, regular, you name it, everything has gone up twice, if not more.
Yeah. And, and I think the last meeting, we actually kicked, you know, this is something we're going to be digging and digging and and, and asking a lot of questions about, but uh one option is to actually do a ba- a recycled bag giveaway for people. Um, so there's, there's a lot of different things. It'll work or it won't. It'll be good for us or it won't be, but we're just digging for information right now.
And we should first consider educating the public.
Yeah.
About why we would like to have this type of ordinance, as businesses as well. I mean, I don't think people really think how long it takes a plastic bag or in a container that lies in the ocean or along our streams. You know, how long does it take? What's the lifespan of this plastic in our environment and the health and safety features that are associated with? I mean, we take everything for granted, so we don't really think about it. But there's a lot of danger. Do you remember the lifespan? It was like, what, sixty years or something? A long time. You know, for a plastic bag or container to disintegrate into the soil. And, and nobody thinks about these things. I mean, we literally, but you know, the, the bags are options and they do save. And when you go into the market and they start asking you for ten cents for a bag, oh, you start thinking about it, trust me, you know? So that, that's an option for, and I think they'll think about it because they're probably not thinking about it in the way of an environmentalist.
Yeah.
Well, and my guess is that the, the big box stores, you know, Giant, Acme, um, you know, they'd be more than happy to get rid of the plastic bags because right now they're paying for them.
Yeah.
You know, um, my guess is they would be just as happy to have you buy bags from them um instead of them paying for it.
And recycled paper bags are, are.
That was another option. Yeah, recycled paper bags.
Actually, if you get Giant Direct, they don't come in plastic bags. They come in recycled brown paper bags with these awesome handles and, you know, they're, they're much more sturdy than the plastic bags that you get. And you put two or three things in them and you bump up against something and all of a sudden all your food's on the ground.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, you know, Giant and Acme might have some very good suggestions for us. So, yeah, whenever you get a chance to reach out there, Josh.
Yeah. And um also that West Ocean just, theirs just went into effect in April. So maybe we could um, I, I know a couple of people on their board and I think Paul, you said you were going to reach out to someone. Um, but the, you know, they, they, their, theirs is a plastic bag ban and a plastic straw ban. And, and if you go into Wawa, you know, in West Ocean now, you have a, you have a choice of a ten cent bag. Um, or um you can take everything out unbagged. Um, so that, that's where they are now. And you know, all of these major companies are probably heading there anyway.
Yes.
Because it, like I said, it costs them money. Whereas if they, they push the cost off on the consumer, that, that is better to their bottom line.
I'm sure there are multiple studies out there, but I just pulled up something that said the lifespan of a plastic bag can be a thousand years.
Yeah. And, and I know there's a lot of people out there who use them multiple times, but the majority of people just put them in the trash after one use. And so anyway, that's, that's, we got digging to do here.
Well, uh, if we have any residents that uh might want to chime in because they would be affected as well. Any thoughts?
Mr. Rose.
Here's Vince. Name and address as usual.
Hey, it's Vince Rose, 135 Turnbrake. My hand was actually up for the fire board uh discussion at the pan late. So I can save it till the end for public comments because I have a couple of other things.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep, sounds good. Thanks.
Great, thanks.
Any other comments on the single use? All right, uh, the public meeting, the uh electronic archive. I, I reached out to Abby uh and she can actually post our videos on YouTube and have a link on our website uh and then archive at that point. And my suggestion, and you know, I haven't discussed it with anybody on the board yet, but my suggestion would be let, let's archive three months worth at this point, start it out. And the good thing about YouTube is you can track how many views uh, you know, how many times it's being hit. If it looks like we're actually getting some activity on this and then we can discuss in three months' time, extend it out to six months or even a year. But I, I think, you know, we should start making a step towards archiving a bit. I don't know how the other commissioners feel.
I think that's a great idea to do.
Good idea.
Ninety days and, and see how it is if we're getting hits and um if, if it's like two hits, three hits, it's not, then we don't need to, but otherwise we do it.
Or ninety days, yeah.
Yeah, start with ninety days and if it's, if it's, if we're getting some hits, then we go to six months. Uh, but we gotta, we gotta start somewhere. So I, 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 I think it's a good idea.
I don't want to live on YouTube forever, but uh, you know, ninety days is good.
Hey, I want my royalties. I'm a, I'm a union actor. I want my royalties.
That's long. I think ninety days is long.
Uh, ninety days is.
That's the consensus. I mean, that's a long time. I mean, if you're really interested, then I know everybody can't be at the meetings and can be in attendance, but I mean, that's the place to be. I mean, if you really want to be involved and know what's going on, then you, you have to make a commitment, spend some time, you know, in the meetings or at the meetings, you know? Have options of being here or, you know, doing it virtually. I mean, you get the information firsthand. And if you go out there thirty days later and, and somebody's already voted on something or something that already has been, you know, a resolution has already been passed. I mean, you know, it's so hard to undo something. So if it's something that you're really interested, you got to really follow it, you know, through its conception. And then you don't have to go back sixty days later and find out that something was done and you didn't know anything about it. And, and this is what we hear a lot. But that's because you're not participating, you're not active, so you don't always know what's going on. So you got to take that in consideration too, you know, to have something out there thirty, sixty, ninety days. I mean, what's, what's the chance that it's going to change ninety days later? So just take that into consideration as we try to accommodate, you know, your needs and concerns as commissioners to give this a trial run to just see how many people are really going to be spending time out there listening to a meeting sixty days later when there's new information coming so fast all the time. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
I will just say, my, the board that I'm on at Slipper Rock University, the, the trustees, they, they do record and archive every one of our meetings. Um, and I did reach out to them to ask if they get much traffic on that. And the answer was rarely. Um, but, you know, we only meet once a quarter, so there, there's less meetings to record. Um, but they, they do keep the, the meeting minutes uh or the meeting uh up. So I, I'm just looking at it now. The oldest one is from June 4th, 2020.
And Abby, um, this is a free service, right? You just have to watch an ad?
Yes. And your ads are tailored to yourself. So keep that in mind. If you get weird ads, it's on you and not on the township.
All right, whatever you're shopping for is going to show up.
We do come.
All right, Ms. Danny, I, I thought I saw a hand raised while, while.
Mr. DeYoung?
Hello again. Um, just a question to go along with this topic is how many people do we actually have on average attending the Zoom meetings?
Right now, we have five right now. And it's sometimes, I mean, I could tell you exactly, you know, Mark, I'll send you an email with how many in the last month. Uh, sometimes we have ten, twenty, sometimes two.
I'm sure when there's a bigger subject like the Lloyd Farm, when that came up, we'd have a lot more, but you know, those types of things, but just interested.
Good question.
Thank you, Mark. All right, uh, Ms. Danny, uh, we, we don't really need to vote or anything. We, we can just, uh,
Just, we'll continue to just leave them as, as additional business and discuss them until we figure out a resolution.
That's a question.
Well, I think we're ready with that one, aren't we?
How long are the minutes archived? I mean, because you can always go back and on the website and
Forever.
We have, the minutes are there forever. I mean, it's the same thing to me as sitting there, spending time. I mean, if you're interested in something that's going on in the planning commission and if that's what you want to read about or follow, then it would make more sense just to go back and, you know, review the minutes from the meeting, which are there forever. So it's the same thing that we're doing live. It's, it's recorded and it's also documented in the archives as well. So just a point to share.
Well, Ms. Danny, do you, uh, if you could, just draft up an ordinance for next meeting?
Well, this wouldn't be by ordinance. I mean, this is just a policy of the board.
Oh, okay.
So I just, we just need direction as what you want us to do.
I would, uh, the direction, the consensus from the board here is to uh post our videos up to ninety days in YouTube.
Do we even need a resolution for that or is it just?
No, I just need a.
I thought she was asking for one.
Yeah.
No, no, I just need a directive.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, all in favor to uh post our videos on YouTube uh for up to ninety days. Say aye.
For how long?
Ninety days.
Ninety days.
Can I just, can we amend that to say, uh, for ninety days and then review?
Then we'll see.
Yeah, then we can, yeah. In ninety days, we can take a look, see what our views are. If we want to change it, but this is, this is a good start.
Yes.
Yes, we have a hand raised here in the township building. That's Mike.
Can't hear him.
Is it on?
I was just suggesting you might want to make it a hundred days, just that way you get a full three months in.
Oh, because we're missing a, a couple of days a month? That sounds fair. That's three months worth of meetings.
We'll do three months. We'll just make it three months instead of. We'll do third, three months.
Sounds good. And we all voted.
Yes.
We're good. Thank you.
Yeah, we're good.
Public comment. We had Vince up earlier.
I don't have anybody with their hands up. No, no.
Yes, Vince.
Hey, hello everyone. Thanks for uh, thanks for the information tonight. I have a couple of items, so if I run long, Paul, just hit the egg timer and tell me to be quiet.
Okay.
Um, so first was the fire board uh report. I understood, I heard that the audit company they originally hired first lost the information and then responded. They don't do, they don't do that service any longer.
Yes.
What's the, I mean, what's the plan to recover the information that was lost? Because that's, that's a potential, you know, big red flag and security breach from a, you know, from a data integrity perspective for the fire company as, and as well as the township.
Apparently it was emailed to them and they do not know where it is. And that's all the information I got, but that's an excellent point and I, I should bring that up at the fire board.
And there's, there's bank account information, there's check numbers, there's check information. And that's, that's pretty big. That's a pretty big.
Yeah, no, I, excellent point, but I have no idea with uh what Mr. Carbo had sent over.
Okay.
And actually, Mr. Rose, none of the township accounts are included in that. This would solely be on the firehouse, not on us.
Understood, but you know, we fund a good portion of that fire company. So if they get hacked and breached and people steal money from them based on information that was lost, then it becomes our problem. So.
No, it doesn't. They are a separate entity with a separate tax ID and separate accounts.
No, I understand. Kristen, I understand that. My point is if they lose hundreds of thousands. No, I understand. Kristin, I understand that. My point is if they lose hundreds of thousands of dollars because of a security breach. And they need money, they're going to come to us. So.
I don't disagree with that, but as far as what the township controls, our information is not.
Okay, I would just request that somebody from the township follow up on where. Missing bank and check information has gone into cyberspace. It's an important thing. We should follow up on it.
Okay.
Second thing is I heard there's a one and five year golf plan that's in the works. Will that be shared in a public meeting in the near future?
Yes, actually, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the preliminary stages because it was, it was not graphed out. So we're trying to work that out and actually have a true one and five year plan with the golf course, so. But yes, that will be shared publicly.
I'll, I'll just check the agendas upcoming and join when I, when I see that on the agenda, so I appreciate that.
Okay.
I did have a chance last week to stop by our, our new company. Our new business on 30, the fruit stand farmer's marketplace. I talked with both owners. I don't know, I was there for maybe forty-five minutes, pretty cool little place. And they did, both did mention how accommodating and helpful the township was. In them establishing their business there. So just want to thank the commissioners and the staff for, you know, helping them along and. You know, getting a new business up and running. I know we don't, you know, we don't have the best reputation for whatever reason, but. And I think that's hopefully slowly going away and this was a good testimonial to the board and to the staff that. You know, I think we're doing a good job. So thank you for that. Wanted to share that with you.
Thanks Vince, I just wanted to say, yes, that's, that's one of the things we're really working hard on is making sure that we make it easier to do business with township. And those guys in there, you're right, they are phenomenal. You know, they're. They didn't just want to open a place to do business. They wanted to open a place where people will come and meet. And it's there. What a great addition.
And I bought. And I bought seventy dollars worth of flowers, so.
Good stuff.
Yep, two other quick things. I don't know if I need to speak with someone at the police station or I can deliver a message here and can get over to them, but. Just been an increased amount of speed. Geo Carlson Boulevard in general. And, and a lot of people ignoring the traffic signs, specifically stop signs and speed limit signs. It appears to happen during rush, evening rush and then, you know, after eight o'clock. So if you can maybe ask, I know the police are busy, but if they can keep an extra eye on Geo Carlson. Just a lot of speed going on there, motorcycles and cars alike.
Okay, more, more so in the evening?
Yeah, like I guess Paul, between like five and seven.
Okay.
And then there's a, for whatever reason, there's a. A quiet period and then, you know, eight, nine o'clock it starts again, so. And I know it's not loud noise, like I can see the cars flying up and down that street, so. It's been going on for a few months now and so I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention if they could.
Do you wonder if it's because, you know, high school's lighting out soon?
Yeah, I mean, springtime, people are out, more out and about, right? It just goes with the season, so. Just, just experiencing a lot more traffic violations than normal.
Okay. All right. Well, Miss Danny, can you reach out to the chief? Just let him know.
We'll discuss it at the staff meeting on Monday.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And then one last item, Monday evening, I was, this is specifically to the golf course. First, I wanted to thank the township for putting up the big white sign on the fourth hole. If, I guess if you don't see that, then you probably can't see your golf ball sitting on the tee because it's a rather large sign, so I appreciate that. Monday evening, I was out sitting on the deck and as you know, the fourth hole is, is my backyard. And there were eight, I want to say teenage boys on the fourth tee with five golf carts. I called over to the golf course. Chris and JT had left for the day. I think I spoke to the cashier and I guess there's one other gentleman. I, forgive me if I have his name wrong. I think it's Tom. He's sort of the outside guy with the carts and the. The trash cans and the range and all that good stuff. And I saw him come by and I spoke with him. First of all, I think it's, there, there's a, you know, I don't know that's a written rule, but in order to play golf, you need a golf bag. So there were teenagers with one golf bag shared between the, among the eight of them with five carts on one hole. That's. That's a pretty irresponsible thing for a golf course to allow on its golf course. You know, the general rule is two people to a cart, two bags on each cart. And no more than a foursome on any hole. And I think if you ask JT or Chris that question, they would agree that that's the general rule of a golf course. I, there's a lot of. Things that are being overlooked after five o'clock or after JT and Chris leave. I think there's probably less staff there. And, you know, the five for five, you get sort of a lot of beginners or people just looking to do something for an hour or two. Don't really understand the golf rules, but again, I don't blame the kids that are on the course. They were allowed on there with five carts and one bag, and so I blame the golf course for letting them on the course. So eight of them were on the tee. One kid hit the shot. He hit my neighbor's house, so I stopped them and I didn't yell at them. I talked to them about. Golf course, you know, etiquette and rules. And how you yell four if it's heading towards a house or somewhere you can't find the ball or see the ball after you. Hit the ball off the tee and they were very nice kids, very understandable. They appreciated me explaining. You know, some of the etiquette to them. But again, I don't blame the kids for anything. The golf course should not allow. Five carts and eight, eight people, whether they're kids, adults, doesn't matter on a golf course on one hole at the same time. So I, the reason I bring it up is, you know, when we met last year and I appreciate the, the audience and the forum. I just think there's less. What's the word I'm looking for? I guess there's just, you know, less people out, you know, like a ranger, there's no ranger on the course. Just sort of looking at, you know, golf course etiquette and behavior of its players, making sure play moves along. So there's just. Very little monitoring that's going on after five o'clock. So I would just ask that, you know, you talk with Chris and JT about. You know, making sure that, you know, the folks that are working are holding up the responsibilities of the golf course and, and not allowing. You know, groups larger than four on, on, you know, on the golf.
At a hole at a time. How many kids were there?
There were eight, eight kids, five golf carts, one bag, yep.
Yeah, so two groups together, we're, we're doing the same hole?
There were one group. They weren't two groups. There were one, yeah, one group. Yep.
Yeah, they should have been.
I have, I, I have pictures which I wasn't going to send or whatever, but Casey thought I was crazy. I did, I did take a few pictures from my deck of the golfers on, on, all in the green at the same time with the carts lined up, so.
Well, we'll talk to Chris and.
Yeah, it just has to be some enforcement of behavior on, on the golf course, especially five o'clock. You know, it's not a miniature golf course. It's a, it's a regular golf course, so. And then I guess Tom, the person I was talking with, you know, he said he's, he doesn't have the time to be the ranger because he's doing other stuff. So I don't know if you're short-staffed or looking for somebody, but he seemed pretty unhappy about. What had been going on there. So I just think some follow-up needs to occur if that would be possible.
I appreciate the info, Vince.
Sure, anytime. That's, I appreciate the extended time to share those topics with you and. I appreciate everything that you guys do and the township does. And looking forward to not having to go on Route 30 to get to Giant and hopefully our municipal bridge will be built within the year. I appreciate, I know, I, I understand the behind the scenes stuff with engineering and design and. Don't want to kill any bog turtles and all that fun stuff, so. I, I understand clearly.
You understand, yeah.
I do. I understand what happens, happens behind the scenes, so you're doing your best and I just want to say thank you and. Appreciate everything you do.
I appreciate that, Vince.
Thanks Vince.
Thank you.
Miss Danny, any other public comment?
Not at this time.
Can I say something super quick?
Oh, absolutely. Abby?
I'm putting on my Historic Society hat. I want to thank you all and the township for supporting our flea market on Saturday. It was hugely successful. We raised over fifteen hundred dollars for the Historic Society and we used that money. Yeah, to, to research the historic buildings in the township, to put those cute little green placards out front. And provide programming for the public. So thank you to all. We had like. Twenty-five volunteers coming out of the woodwork at six thirty in the morning, hauling stuff back and forth. For Brett was a huge help. Mike and Lorraine were both there. Jane came. It was just, it was a great day and beautiful weather, so thank you.
Well attended.
All right.
Yep.
That is awesome.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
All right, any other public comment?
Not at this time.
All right, and I will ask for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved in second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you.